This meeting is ordered. The votes are waiting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have a roll call. Nelson Reepenack.
Yep.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Larry Seager. Venus Shae.
Here.
James Still.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Phil Wilson. Is there anybody here that wants to bring something before the council?
I would like to. My name's Kathy Kastner. I live at 128 Green Avenue. I've lived there for, this July will be 21 years. First year I moved in there, I had sewage backup. Plumbers out there plunging traps, burr coming out plunging traps. Went on every year. Seven years ago, had another problem, sewage backup. And I'm finding things that shouldn't have been in my basement, that shouldn't have been there, especially for me. Well, what happened was, they told me my trap was broke. I had to dig up, put all new line in. So we ran all new line from our brand-new trap back to our house. At that point, got it closed up. Very next day, I've got sewage backup again. Now I've got all new line dug up, which everybody knows, that's not cheap to have done. So, after we did that, the burr actually come out. They got a snake and they snaked out the lateral. Well, we find out that we're on a shared lateral, me and the lady that lives next door. We're on a shared lateral. So, what happened, they dug a bunch out of there. I just had a new furnace put in three years ago, new hot water heater put in last year. I had cold water, I said to my husband, "That pilot light or something must have went out in that hot water heater." Go down and we've got six inches of water in our basement. This was Friday morning. Luckily, I, my company called off work, called us all off because of the ice. We started pumping out at 11 o'clock at night. At 11 o'clock the next day, we're still pumping water out of our basement. We can't figure out why we have, we're pumping so long. We pumped 3,000 gallons per hour with our pump. Here we find out, next-door neighbor has baggage. We're actually pumping the neighbor's out. So for 20 years now, I have been getting sewage backup from neighbor's house. Because we are on a shared lateral. But the whole problem is, we shouldn't be backing up. I actually called and I spoke with Kim Zimmerman. And I thanked him so much for getting his guys out there. They actually come out, got everything opened up. But they brought the cameras out on Monday. They found out there's a block or a break underneath the road. Today, they came out and they dug up. They found a break. Not only that, they also found two main sewer lines. Two main that they didn't know was there. Now, we're supposed to be my house and the very next one was supposed to be flowing into one. There's two other houses down beside me. So they ended up dumping die down one of their traps. It actually flowed through the one sewage pipe that they found. So we actually got tied into that one now. The old one where we were tied in is capped off. But, you know, you've got all this money right now, grant money for infrastructure. You know, I've put out a lot of money over the years, in 20 years, with digging up my sewer line when I shouldn't have had to. Plumbing bills, I'm paying sewer bills, but it isn't being pumped out the sewer line, it's being pumped in my basement. You know, I suggest you use some of this money and start fixing some of these lines, these sewer lines, updating. Like I said, there's two sewage lines running down, main lines running down, right on Green Avenue, that they don't even know is there. I mean, some of, these things need updated. I mean, it's not fair to put all this money back with it. Homeowners gotta dish us out of their pocket. You know, the money's out there now. I mean, and like I said, I spoke with Jim, left him to everything that's, you know, right now, we're tied in. I've got pictures, they actually tied us into the other main line that they found. But, it's old terra-cotta pipe. My house was built in 1930. It was one of the, probably one of the first houses, Debbie Bargo, you know. I mean, the schools there, the school was built, my house, the next door. The next house, it probably wasn't built until 1960. So that's probably how that second sewage line got put in. The next house over was built in 1955, because I talked to the gentleman, he's an architect. His grandfather actually owned the house I lived in. His father built that house that he lived in, which would be the fourth house. It was built in 1955, the flood come through when they were building. So, this is probably how this extra sewer line got in there, but it's not even showing up on Yonkers Maps. I mean, things need updated. I've put a lot of money out these, you know, for 20 years now. I mean, I'm finally, hopefully, I'm opened up now. I'm asking, you know, for a separate lateral being put in there, which I'm hoping, you know, everything goes through with that. But, I mean, I can't control what other people flush neighbors. And I mean, this is what's happening to a lot in Lewis Town. Shared lateral were put in many years ago to save money. Well, the homeowners are, you know, it's coming back on people like me, and it's not fair. I mean, the guys come out today, the guys that work for the sewage company, they did one awesome job, I thank them. They finally got a problem fixed that I've had for 20 years now. I mean, I don't like cleaning up somebody else's sewage that's in my basement.
I've already talked to Dawn and Ben, and I've already talked to Ms. Kastner. We're putting a separate lateral in for her house this spring. It'll get fixed permanently.
Just keep touch with them.
I thank you.
Hey guys, we're just gonna sit this here real quick. And I'll pick it up afterwards. If you get it, she has to, go through these photographs. My name's Carrie Cobal, and I'm the president of One Dog at a Time, O-D-A-P. We deal with abuse neglect of animals. We've successfully been able to get one felony case in eight years. Investigated, tried, and convicted in this town. We deal with the whole state, not just Lewis Town. But, I've been to council before, it's been a couple years, okay? I deal with the whole state, our volunteers deal with the whole state. Our funds are stretched throughout the whole state. I have a couple issues that I want to address quickly. One is, our town, and I don't have the specific numbers, which I'll come up with, but the majority of it is landlords. It's almost all rental properties, okay? When I first started this rescue a couple years back, I was contacted right after I started it, and asked to come in and talk to council, and I did. And I was approached with, "Hey, what could you do to help us with the cat issue?" Which I think that anyone sitting here can address the fact that, I have never been in a town that you drive through and you will see one cat. I don't care if you go that way, I don't care if you go that way. One cat everywhere. It's, they're on porches, they're all over the place. People get frustrated, "Well, the cats peeing in my yard," or "Cats peeing on my car, seven on my car." Okay, but nothing is gonna get any better unless we attempt to try to do something with that. When council approached me years ago, they said, "What can you do?" I said, "Help me. Help me help you guys. Help me help the cats, help me help you." So, what I had suggested was that we'd be able to get some assistance with a grant. Our organization would coordinate everything. I just need help with it being written. I'm literally a no-one. I don't know people, I'm not from this area. I need help with a grant. If we can get a grant for TNR, to be able to do some TNR, it does work. One female cat can have three litters a year. Three, three. And the litters could range anywhere from one. We had a cat that had 11 kittens. Eleven. And it's not just about the kittens that are running all around this town, okay? It's about the fact that rabies has been detected. The problem is, is it's not actually, like, you don't open up the paper and you see that, "Hey, there was a cat found in Lewis Town that had the rabies." You don't see that because they don't, they don't put it out there. The Department of Agriculture, who deals with the rabies cases, there's, nobody's notified. I mean, isn't that sort of a little crazy when you think about it? We think we had a case up in Strods, Ferguson Valley on Big Ridge, just recently. We had a cat. It was a stray cat, people were feeding, and the cat was fine, friendly, whatever, attacked a woman. It then attempted to try to get in someone's house. That's indicative of rabies. That doesn't happen with a friendly cat, just to happen. Unfortunately, that cat was shot in the head and we weren't able to test, because that's how they tested. So, I want to go back to the landlord issue, because the landlord issue in this town is, becomes our issue. And yes, we could say, "Forget, I'm not dealing with it." But I really don't want to do that. I think that there's things that landlords could be required to do in Lewis Town, if they're gonna allow people to have pets. I mean, period. You know, it would be really great for each landlord to get a photo of the animals that they're permitting in their home. With the name, with the rabies vaccines, with the fact that the animal would be spayed and neutered, okay? Because here's what's happening in this town, and I'm telling you from experience. I was contacted about, and I will give you one example. Where Rex was involved, and I don't know all the details, because I haven't spoke to Rex, but I'm gonna tell you what I know on my end. A home was locked up by Corey Confer, who was a landlord. I know he's the landlord, I did the search, it is his property. The property was locked up with several cats on the inside of it. The person who lived there contacted me scared to death that these cats were gonna starve in this house. Because he changed the locks, it was not legal through the court system. And listen, one thing you're not gonna get from me is, A, a lie, and I'm not gonna beat around the bush, because I'm tired. I don't know if you can tell. But, they locked the doors, the guy had nowhere to go, he literally texted him and said, "You can't come back, I've changed the locks." There was no legal eviction, and Rex was involved with this. This is what I will say, at some point in time, because we are crazy busy, I deal with an entire state trying to assist police departments in handling animal cruelty. I can't always run. But I can tell you that the guy was so stressed out that he broke the window. So now we have a crime, right?
Yep.
We have a crime. He's now broke a window to make sure that his cats are fed that are inside that house that he couldn't get to, because Corey wouldn't let him in. Okay? Here's where I have the problem. So 10:00, 12:30 at night, I'm on, what's the street? So you're coming through town and you make the right, and there's those buildings right there that are a bunch of slums. And nobody can tell me any different, I've been in them, if you've ever smelled them. Why those things haven't been shut down, I don't know. I'm guessing that they're friends with whoever decides this stuff. I mean, these buildings, I don't know if you've been in these buildings, but take, take a look. Because we've got, that one particular building that's like, there's Salvation Army and there's like, three buildings down where people sit outside all the time. And these are people that are being taken advantage of, because a lot of them have mental health issues, they may be a little slow, whatever. They're charging them top dollar for these apartments, they're letting them have animals. And then what happens is, is he kicks their ass out, excuse my French, whenever he's not getting his rent, or wants to hike the rent up constantly. And then they have nowhere to go, so guess what they do? That's the cat you're seeing. When you're driving down the street, these are tame, friendly cats, probably not vetted. Three-fourths of the animals in this town, I could guarantee you, lay money on it, are not vetted. Okay? Vet care is through the roof. But the pictures that I have provided here, if, if I didn't get, are just some, Amy, oh, never mind. Some of the cats, and it's not very bright. But, what did we say, I apologize, Amy, how many cats did we say that we just got together picture-wise today?
Oh, um, just the pictures of the most severe, I'd say 20, 25.
Okay. I could tell you that one of these cats cost us over $1,000. This was just recently. This is a cat where, and I'm trying to remember if they were kicked out by Rex, or if they were kicked out by the landlord. The cat was found on someone's porch. Here's a finder, it could be you that found the cat. You can either look the other way, but some people won't do that, because it's not really the cat's fault. So you've got a tame cat that can't move on somebody's front porch, what are we supposed to do? Are we supposed to just start humanely euthanizing, paying $150? I don't think that's fair. So we treat this cat, $1,000 of donated money that we have got to raise. And we do that, it's our choice. But I need some help here, because these landlords allowing these people to get these animals, that then are flipping, turning around, and they're letting them out. And then I have to be perfectly honest, and you know, you and I have had a lifelong conversation about this whole thing. Is, when things like this happen, there are charges that can be done. But you cannot get the police to either, A, respond to the call, or, B, even do an investigation if they don't. Okay? And I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just, I'm giving you as real of a testimony as I possibly can, based on my personal experience. I just had a call about a dog getting beat. I had three witnesses that were willing to testify. The location where the dog was beat, there were supposed to be cameras, because there was a business, okay? So I call an officer on scene. The officer didn't even ask the witness what kind of dog it was. Isn't there an investigation to be had here? Because we are talking about animal cruelty, we are talking about abuse, and it is also in the Pennsylvania Crimes Code. It is a law. It is what our police departments are supposed to enforce. And that is what my organization has attempted to try to do, to help them, for years in this county. I can tell you that this is the only department in the state of Pennsylvania, and I deal with departments all over the state. I've been to court hearings, I've fought with district attorneys to get people revoked, I've done it all. And this is the only department in the state of Pennsylvania that I've called communications and said, "If they call you for me, don't call me." Not fair. Because really, does it hurt them? No. It hurts the animals. Okay? I mean, we are willing to say, "Hey, there's a live animal, it's being beat. If you're willing to do the investigation, you want us to hold that animal? Because by the way, they're property." So it's now evidence, which they don't have a place to put in their station, where are they gonna put a live animal? I have officers that take animals home. Home, because this state does not provide those resources, okay? We just want to get a little bit of help from the community, because we are located here. Like, I help animals four hours away, I help police departments four hours away. We've had felony animal cruelty cases that we've had charged and convicted, four hours away. You know? And, I, I just need a little bit of help. So I'm at 12:30 at night, down there trapping cats that should have never been kept in that apartment like that. The guy should have been allowed to get his cats. And I've got Rex telling people, at least this was hearsay, that cats aren't protected under the law, but that's not true. And it's, I don't know who the lawyer is here, because I don't remember, because, well, I haven't been here for a while. But, it's not true. Animals are considered property in the state of Pennsylvania. So if they shut up that house, okay, a rental property, and the tenant leaves, because they have to, they're shutting it up. They're, uh, what's it called? Not evicting, when they condemn it.
Oh.
And this is happening a lot, and it has throughout the years, and I've kept my mouth shut and I just can't take it anymore. But so they condemn a property, there's animals in it. Those animals are still the tenant's animals, they're not the landlord's animals. The landlord can't just give those animals to whoever. He can't sign those animals over to my organization, because they're not his to sign over, unless they're in his illegal, or a legal eviction process, where everything in the house is relinquished to the landlord, okay? However, that being said, the landlord does have duty of care of those animals, so when they kick the tenant out, and nobody's allowed in the property, there's still animals in there, they have to be fed and watered, okay? Whose responsibility is that? That's the landlord, until that tenant takes those animals out. So if they have to go through the eviction process to get the animals out, that's fine. But I can't take the five cats that are in somebody's apartment building right now, because they were told that it's their responsibility to do whatever with these animals. They could get sued for getting rid of the cats. So, people are telling people and advising people of laws that don't even exist. The guy that did not pick his cats up at that apartment complex should be cited for abandonment under the PA Crimes Code. He abandoned his animals there. And then we deal with the landlord. You know what I mean? But we're not getting anything cited. And it's not for me not trying, and it's not for me not offering, it's not for me not walking in that office down there and asking to, talk to people. Okay? And I'm not just looking at him, because I'm sure that he's got a boss above him, so it's, is it important to the person above them? And then, is it important to the person above them? And then, is the crime gonna be even followed through with, and our charge is gonna be had, is the district attorney to care? So I understand the system, like, I understand how it works. But, this town, and the amount of animal cruelty neglect, and the abandoned animals is absurd. When people can't walk out of their house because their next-door neighbor dumped five cats out on the porch, and she can't let her dogs out, because they're all sitting there trying to get in, because they live in a double. You know? And then they want me to come out and get these five cats, where am I sticking them? Because I can tell you, I went to the commissioners and said, "Please, help me. Help me get a building around here. We don't have animal control, we don't have a shelter in Mifflin County." I'm trying so hard. My family is killing themselves to be able to help these animals in the area. My dedicated volunteers are killing themselves. We're running around like a bunch of chickens with, I could, anybody have any money? And I'm being honest with you, listen, you want to make some money in this area? I could tell you exactly what to do. Get yourself a little piece of property and build kennels. Because the amount of money that you could make off of Lewis Town alone with the stray dogs in just this town, in a week, is nuts. It would pay the rent. Because you can charge a fee as animal control. Every single stray dog that's picked up, $50. You give them a vaccine, there's another $30. Each day they're in there, $25 a day. By the time these people figure out when to come and get their dog, it's gonna be $300, and they're not gonna be able to afford it anyway. So do you know the amount of money that can be made in animal control? It's crazy. So, we're doing what we can, all the way down to going out at night and helping a police officer. You know, when they've got dogs trying to get in people's houses, and they call communication and say, "Hey Carrie, you think you could come down here, because this dog's trying to get into somebody's..." There's two dogs trying to get into someone's house, right? Here we find out, my husband went out, 1:30 in the morning, we find out, there's an unspayed female Chihuahua inside the house. The two dogs that were attempting to try to get in the house were unneutered males. They were aggressive towards the police officers, because the police officers aren't trained to even handle them, because they're not animal control officers. We know this, right? So within five minutes, my husband has them both in the car. But what would they have done? You know what I mean? Would it ended up with someone's dog that was shot? I mean, it could, and who would blame them? They're not trained. Do you see where I'm coming from? I mean, I realize that I seem a little crazy, but it takes a lot for me to get here.
Carrie, when you were here last time, I think that someone had mentioned about, you know, we don't do grant writing here.
Correct.
And suggested that you go talk to the county and their grant writer. Did you not get anywhere?
I did talk to him. What, isn't it you?
No, that's not him, no.
Who was it? The guy in the basement?
Lisa Stone.
Lisa Stone.
No, I wasn't given, I don't think I was given her information. Was I? Who knows?
Okay.
I'm so busy.
But you mentioned that you've been to the county and talked to them, I don't know if they offered you that.
The commissioners?
Yeah.
I mean, I talked to them, I gave them my little spiel, and I've yet to hear back about, because there is actually a law, okay, out there. It's from the 80s, that a teen something or other, that says that the counties are all able to give money to a nonprofit organization who is wanting to do with things with the prevention of cruelty to animals. I'm trying to give you guys resources, I'm trying to give our officers the resources. You know what I mean? We've done microchip readers, catch pulls, and slip leads, and if a department doesn't have it, it's not because it wasn't offered, it was because it wasn't accepted. And that's every department in this county. I've made sure to touch base with every single one, because if we have a microchip reader out there, they're, they're by law supposed to respond to every stray dog complaint. Wouldn't it be smarter for them to have a microchip reader, that they can just scan over the dog? They can call me anytime, day or night. They've been given that, I mean, 4:30 in the morning, they can call me with a microchip, I'm gonna look it up, and we're gonna try to get that dog home. They have nowhere for it. And Granville Township's not letting anybody use that kennel over there anymore. And they're not, and they're doing that for a reason, because they were the ones who were, and I'm not saying this is what they said, but I already know, they were the main caretakers of those animals. So if they accepted one from Lewis Town, or regional, or whatever, they were still the ones that were taking care of it until the dog warden could make it here. And just so you know, Missy is buried up to her eyeballs in three counties, okay? And just quickly, before I forget, if you lose your dog, if you are a dog owner, and your dog is not microchipped, and you lose your dog, and somebody picks it up in Lewis Town, and let's say they live in Harrisburg, and they're just coming through, and they don't know what to do with the dog, because there's not even a shelter to call around here to drop it off as a stray, and they drive it to Harrisburg, and they turn it into the Harrisburg Humane Society. You have exactly 48 business hours to find your dog, before they can either, A, vet and adopt it out, B, transfer it to another rescue or shelter, or C, euthanize it straight away, do not have to do a behavior evaluation, nothing. My two, two of my personal dogs would never make it out of the shelter, they'd be scared to death. That's not an environment they're used to being in, and usually that's what it is, is fear. But if you're, so I'm like, "Please, I want to have a microchip clinic, give me somewhere to have it." You know what I mean? We'll give out free chips. I will give out free chips at a microchip clinic in Mifflin County, if somebody can help me find a tech or somebody that will put it in, and you give me a location to have it. I want to help the citizens in this town, because by helping them and their animals, it's gonna help me. Because I'm trying to do this everywhere, and I can tell you that we're tired. You know what I mean? I just want to help you. If we can get a TNR grant, I know there's probably at least a 10 that I could even just sort of think off the top of my head, that we could get together, do some trapping. We would transport. You know what I mean? We're transporting animals from Mifflin County the whole way down to Willow Street, past Lancaster County, just to get them spayed and neutered. There's no resources. COVID has kicked our rear ends.
What's TNR standard?
It's Trap, Neuter, and Release. And basically what happens when they, and this is why it's important as far as the rabies thing, is, they get trapped, they go down, they get neutered, but they also get a rabies vaccine. And what people don't understand is, a rabies vaccine, like, when you get your dog rabies, the first year, it's a one-year rabies. After that, it's a three-year rabies. But the thing of it is, is it's the same solution for the three-year as it is for the one-year. So, it's just some protection. I mean, I've had, I had an elderly woman downtown Lewis Town call me and tell me, "This cat is trying to get in our house." Like viciously trying to get in our house, that's indicative of rabies. If that, and she called the police, nobody's coming out. Why would they? What are you gonna send a gun? I mean, like, really. You can send the police officer, what are they gonna do with it? Right? So we were willing to go out and try to trap it safely, because you don't want to touch any of it, you don't want to touch the saliva, you don't want to get bit, you don't have to go through the series of rabies shots, because that's what's gonna happen. So TNR is awesome, because we're also cutting down the numbers. I mean, we're talking about one breeding female, three litters a year. And that's minimal. I mean, they can do it three. And do you know that a kitten, a female kitten at four months of age can get pregnant? Four months. Four months. It's just, and I realize this isn't the worst problem in the world, or the worst problem in our county, but when I'm handing you guys, you guys, when I'm handing everyone, and really trying to give you some resource, I just need a little bit of help. You know? I just want some help.
Carrie, can I like, chime in with this a little bit?
Sure.
I actually did have a problem with, I mean, a dog. I have a problem with the neighbor, the Central Brown Street, she has a cat. She lets it out. Where does it come do their business at? My yard. Okay? I have a dog. It actually attacked my dog. I called the police, they actually cited her for allowing, allowing her dog out. Now, I just bought, and I had to put my dog down after 15 years. I just bought a little Cavalier King Charles spaniel.
Here we go.
A little baby.
Right?
They're not, they're not cheap to buy.
Right.
Now here's this cat back in my yard. But when I look at it, I mean, its ears are all messed up, it's been cat fights, I don't know, I don't know what kind of disease it has.
Okay, but here's the thing, so they knew that was her cat, right?
Exactly, they find her.
And they find her, okay, so here's where the law comes in. If they knew that was her cat, and there were witnesses stating that this is the woman's cat that would go to court and testify that this is her cat, so if they've already cited on this individual situation, that is an owned cat. The fact that that woman's letting that cat out, no, there's no stray cat laws, per se, unless you create one for your town, okay? But this is what's going on, is these cats are, so if that cat needs medical care, if this cat is in bad shape, that woman is responsible for medical care, and if she doesn't get it, it's called failure to provide medical care, it's under Title 18, and they can be charged for neglect. So our officers are absolutely able to advise these people and say- So our officers are absolutely able to advise these people and say, your cat, based on what I'm looking at, I mean, we all have a little bit of common sense. You can almost tell. We had, we took in a cat that was shot. Shot. This was somebody's own cat. This wasn't a feral that when you trapped it, it like wanted to eat you. It was tame. You know what I mean? So this is somebody's cat that they just opened the door and let out. I mean, I had a cat that lived for twenty-four years and we tied her on a tether like a dog if she went outside. It's not that big of a deal. You know? Yeah, dear.
Why don't you write something down? You're just rambling around and around and around. I know you want money.
Well, no, I don't even necessarily want money.
You're gonna have to get it in order so we know what it is.
Right.
Right now, I have no idea what, what you want. I thought it was money, now you wrote something else.
I, I had approached before about a grant rate, someone to help me with grants.
I wasn't on that account.
I know.
No, but, and you were giving Lisa, Lisa Stalnich or his name?
Yeah, probably so. Could I get that again?
Sure, absolutely.
Because this time I will make it a point. I mean, again, I'm, I'm, I'm a whole, I'm a whole state sixty-seven county.
What's your phone number, Carrie?
It's, uh, seven-one-seven-five-eight-zero-one-four-two-zero.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
One?
Four-two-zero.
Seven-one-seven?
Yeah. When people ask me if it's Carrie, I'm like, I don't think it is. I'll talk to her later. I really appreciate your time, truthfully.
Good luck. Thanks for everything.
Absolutely. And I apologize, I like, I had to reiterate and I have to push everything out so I sound like a snot, and I'm not really trying to be one. I'm just happy I didn't cough the whole way through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're getting Larry's here on the phone.
Are you there?
Are you there, Mr. President?
I'm here.
All right, hang tight. Uh, we're going to the next thing here, so you're on.
Okay.
If someone else has anything else they wanna talk about.
Does anybody else want to say anything before we move on?
And I will get that list together for you.
Before we move on to the consent agenda, we have a motion to approve all this stuff, all these things.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're gonna go on to the regular agenda, you're gonna turn over to Kim.
All right. First thing is the ARPA guidelines projected expenditures. It's common knowledge that, uh, it's been hit on numerous times that there's ARPA money out for, uh, different, all the municipalities and county, et cetera. The borough got, over the next two years, is gonna get eight-hundred-twenty-five, eight-hundred-fifty, about eight-hundred-fifty thousand dollars, okay? So during a finance meeting, we kinda just ran through some possibilities for expenditures. None of these are locked in unless they're in green on the right-hand side. Under public health and safety, uh, we're talking tonight in a little bit about the fire department, you'll see that, a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Um, one of the things that's available for expenditure under ARPA is vacant and abandoned property purchase and demolition. That's one of the things that, uh, we kinda just talked about, putting some money aside for some of the, the demolition, derelict properties in town. Down here ties in with, uh, a subject that we'll be talking about here, a couple bullets down and what Kathy Castner was talking about, is fixing some of the sewer lines in, inside the borough. Farther on down here, here's some money for the parks. This is the one for Rec Park. And these are locked in, these are just placeholder numbers till the council decides what they, if, if they wanna do anything with it. One of the things the finance committee talked about, and it's not recommended for approval, it's what we talked about, is setting aside, uh, some money to give back to the community in the form of scholarships. Because you can use that money for fighting COVID and for, uh, as it says, addressing economic, negative economic impact for people losing their jobs and families with low income. So one of the things we talked about is setting some money aside over the next four years that the borough would set up a council or a board, uh, with members from the school board, the, the school, uh, the borough council, people in town, uh, et cetera, that would be the, I guess you could say administrators of that funding with borough council approval. Uh, you know, a thousand dollars per semester for a student or something like that, they'd have to go through a process of whatever the council, the council or the board sets up, you know, essays, that kinda thing, uh, proving why they need the money, et cetera. The money wouldn't go to the student, the money would go to the school. They'd have to be registered, provide proof, the register to the school, and money would go straight to the school. You gotta be a full-time student, et cetera. That's one of the things they were talking about, giving money back to the community. ARPA is not forever. If you look down here, on this block here, you see that, uh, it's gotta be committed by December twenty-twenty-four, so two years, and obligated and gone by December twenty-sixth. So we'd have about four years to spend it all. Uh, and we're not in a hurry to do that because we have a lot of uses for it yet. Any questions on this before I go to the next subject?
Can that be used on streets?
Say again, heavy?
Can that be used to pave the streets?
It can be used for infrastructure of streets if it has to do with COVID. In other words, you got a clinic and they can't get to the clinic because the road's really bad. Or if it's part of a tax base or something where you, you're affected by a negative impact on inflow of money that was gonna be used for something like a street project. So for right now, the answer would be no because it doesn't apply to anything in the borough.
Okay.
Good thought.
Yeah, it's, I understand where he's coming from. Yeah, it's, it's, it's very strict guidance on this. Next thing, number two, fire department consolidation. I'm gonna leave that for the fire chief. He said he wants to talk about that when he talks at his borough port. Inflow and infiltration data. Okay, this is something that, uh, I think we need to take a serious look at. This has to do exactly with Kathy was talking about again. When you look at, uh, let me rotate this. Okay, if you look at the blue line on there, that's like our normal rainfall, rain, rainfall, with the flow of the sewer lines. And then you see the big increase on here, that's the latest rain event. What that is, is storm water infiltrating into our sewer systems, okay? That's bad. That's why the houses are backing up in the basements in town. Because we're getting too much water in our sewer lines for it to be handled and, and the normal process of flowing out to the sewer plant. The other piece on this that's an issue for us is all that increase in water means it's more, more, uh, liquid sewer going into the sewer street plant, which means it increases our cost to treat it. So whenever this water goes into the sewer street plant, that's more cost to the borough and that's a lot of money. It's tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. That's why we need to take a serious look at this. If you look at chemical usage on here, you see the rainfall and the precipitation over time. You can see how much, uh, it is an increase in those chemicals. And I did the math with, with Dawn earlier and it, bottom line is, I forget the word, but it's a lot of money. I mean, it's like tens and tens and tens of thousands of dollars. That's why we need to take a serious look here in the future on repairing our lines. If you go back to the ARPA budget, this piece right here, the slip lining for Sixth Street is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. That's one of the things we wanna use some of the ARPA money to try to fix some of these sewer lines in town. And Dawn and I will put together a plan for the council here in the future if you look at. This is kind of an FYI for you right now. Parking meters. Uh, there's been discussion about parking meters in town, upgrading the ones we have. We got about eight-hundred. They wanna move to a parking meter system. Uh, this is in conjunction with the parking authority as well of moving to like a quarter base, uh, hour at a time kinda thing. But it's five hundred dollars to replace one parking meter. To go to the new system, which is digital, which takes an app or a credit card, you know, you swipe it or whatever. It's about five hundred dollars a parking meter. If you want a kiosk-type parking meter, it's about ten thousand dollars. Um, and that's what the parking authority be talking about doing in their parking lots. This is just FYI for now because it's the first initial cost factors they've been able to find. If we have eight-hundred meters in town, you wanna replace eight-hundred meters, that's four hundred thousand dollars, um, to replace the meters. Not saying we're doing that, it's just, this is just the initial information for the, for the, for the guys here, ladies and gentlemen here. All right, let's talk about contract negotiations for our union FYI. Their next contact, contract negotiations are scheduled for the seventeenth of February and the twenty-fourth of February. Employment opportunities, just go through this real quick. Let me go back to the agenda. Okay, just, just FYI. Summer interns, last year we didn't have summer interns. We're looking at doing some summer interns this summer between May and I believe September, which is in accordance with the ASME contract. They're gonna be very helpful for us. Uh, we did talk about this with the personnel committee. Not asking for any concurrence or anything now, it's just an FYI that we think it's a good thing to bring them back to the borough to help for the summer. Deputy DT, DPW, we did talk about that, we're gonna talk about that later on. Uh, that's the direct, deputy director of Public Works. The wastewater treatment plant maintenance technician, um, that is also open, we got a bunch of applicants for that. Streetsweeper working position, that's open. The working position's open. And the basement working position is open, but it's out for internal bid right now, so it's not out for public hire yet. The pool manager just resigned, uh, but I believe we got a possible, uh, pool manager already possibly lined up that's already an employee of the borough, she's, she's interested in it. The zone hearing board vacancy, um, that's something we have to move forward on, we just haven't done it yet, we have to get that advertised. Uh, and pending the borough manager's report, that's what I got for this section, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of January, the fire department ran forty-three alarms, which consisted of two miscellaneous fires, four building fires, a chimney fire, sixteen medical assists. Uh, the reason they're kinda high for the month is we had crews on the stations for the ice storm and all that kinda stuff. And anytime they had to respond in another area, we sent a few fire apparatus, whether the furnace being powered to get the locks clear and everything else for them. Uh, we had two motor vehicle accidents with injuries, two with entrapment which took extrication. And we had our usual three gas leaks. We had a carbon monoxide incident, a police assist, public service, and a smoke odor investigations, we had three of them, and five automatic alarms. At the last council meeting, I was asked for an update on the consolidation between United and Brooklyn Fire Company. I didn't have much information for you, but, uh, tonight I have Assistant Chief Sean Markley with me. He's been working internally with them. So Sean's gonna come up and give you a report and the progress of the consolidation.
Everybody behind you does.
All right. So I asked, Abby Espy, some of you may know Abby, to provide me with the, what, what you're asking for. Brooklyn United have been meeting with Rob Brady, the consultant since November of twenty-twenty to work on merging the two stations. Uh, over the past two years, the two stations have worked together and established bylaws, SOPs, budget, a lease agreement for the bar, social club SOG, social club bylaws, social club, social club budget. Uh, the goal was to make everything as simple and easy as possible for a clear separation between Brooklyn and the social club. The merger is broken down into two parts. Brooklyn's bar becomes its own entity, Brooklyn merges into United, becoming one station. Uh, merger plan outline was establish fundamental needs, bylaws, SOGs, budget. Brooklyn will separate assets between the bar and fire. Bar will become its own entity, keeping Brooklyn's current EIN number. New name is to be determined, but for now, it is referred to as the Brooklyn Social Club. Brooklyn's fire side will be merged into United Fire and Rescue, followed by name change of United to the voted and accepted new name. Uh, the timeline as it stands now is all documents required for foundations are completed as of January twenty-twenty-two. The draft lease agreement is being updated February twenty-twenty-two. A plan of merger vote for each company will happen in March of twenty-twenty-two. Each company will vote to officially merge. Brooklyn will vote to separate the bar from the fire assets and documents will then go to the state and attorney general at a time to be determined. Uh, if any more information, you can contact Abby Espy. Her email is on here, if somebody would like this.
I'll get copies, everybody else get a scan, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have as of now.
So you think it's gonna be done in March?
Uh, the voting on it. The voting, the voting will be done in March. Um, I just spoke with Abby today and she said that at the very earliest, and, and this is just really a, a rough idea, the very earliest of any, uh, total consolidation would be, uh, three months out at the earliest, probably longer than that, hopefully by the end of the year.
Hopefully by the end of the year? You started this two years ago.
It's not something that hap, the, the biggest thing is, is the social club. If it were just two fire companies without the social club, it would probably already be done. But that's, that's the whole.
So, so social club is holding it up?
Well, it's, it's just, there's a lot more to do because of the social club, because of keeping the social club.
So why do we keep the social club?
That's, you would have to ask the members of each station, uh, just myself.
Well, no, I'm asking you, why do we keep the social club for Brooklyn down there?
Social club pays the bills.
Yeah, the social club is, and actually the, the lease agreement that the, that they're working on was, it's actually profitable for the fire company. Well, not, not so much profitable for the fire company, but the bills that they're gonna pay makes it easier for the fire company. But it's the whole separation that's taking the time, so I, I think with, as long as the, the last numbers I heard on the, on the lease agreement was the, with the, the social club, what they're gonna pay is, you know, it's a real nice chunk of change that the, that the fire company won't have to pay then for utilities, so.
They haven't been doing that a long?
I, I don't know because I'm not.
I've got some issues here.
Well, but I'm not from, I'm not from the Brooklyn. Okay? My, my years have been from United, so.
Right.
As far as what happened at the Brooklyn up until now, and, and I've only sat in on some of the meetings, I'm trying not to get too involved in it.
Yeah, I got it.
Kim, just, just some backstory for you there. I mean, I think that, yes, the social clubs have supported the fire companies, but it's been, like you said, they haven't been doing, there's been questions as to, it was never clearly spelled out as to who was paying what and how much.
That's, that's what I was getting at, yes.
And that's what the separation between the two, between the social clubs and the fire departments was hopefully to get at, that you didn't wanna do away with those because, yes, they do provide monies to the fire department, but we wanted some clear delineation of how is that occurring and where is that money going? So that was why.
Yeah, I agree.
That was all done.
And some of that time that I said about, I said the paperwork has to go to the state, so who knows how long that's going to take. They ultimately have to approve everything after that's done, after both companies voted on it and the paperwork sent. I'm sure by the end of the year, definitely. Abby said three months, maybe longer, so three months you're already into.
By the end of the year.
Three months you're already halfway through the year. So, yeah, I personally hope it's a lot sooner than also.
So that's one company. City was supposed to be separating as well, where does that stand, do you know?
That you would address with Captain from the city.
I understand.
A little quick before he takes over, I understand that you need something from Louis on Borough, correct, paperwork wise?
He has no idea.
I'm not sure. Like I said, I just got, I was asked.
You just need support from Borough Council, essentially, right?
Borough Council was on the, kind of, got the ball rolling on the consolidation years ago. This was kind of brought on by Borough Council.
Right.
And it worked. Yeah, United and Brooklyn are doing what Council asked for quite some time ago, yeah. Anything else?
I guess I look at the end of the year date, we're looking at $145,000, $150,000 to be divided by three stations to help to offset your expenses and carry you through.
Right.
That was what was brought to finance, right Bob?
Right.
And we were looking at relatively, I won't say quickly, but more timely. Now we're looking at the end of the year where that money is going to be divided by three rather than by two.
Right.
That's why I guess I kind of look at the end of the year date as a.
As I said, I just threw that out there, as I said, we're looking probably somewhere between the middle of the year to the end of the year.
Yeah.
Like I said, three months was at the earliest, so you're already at the middle of the year there, so somewhere, I don't want to give you, I don't want to tell you yet in four months it's going to be done, because I don't have that answer. We're moving along as fast as we can basically. The consultant has actually been quite happy with the progress that's been made, so, and I can say there, the two stations so far have spent roughly $20,000 just in the merger.
I understand it's not going to happen overnight.
But your question is, are we going to divide the money between three or two?
Yeah.
Right, right.
It'd be far more advantageous to two companies than three, if you're already struggling to pay your bills at the end of the week.
Right, but also rushing in something before everything's done and, you know.
I think you'll get an answer after you leave Bullet Number Six on the new and unfinished business, that's what's going to kind of draw the train that pulls under. When we get to that area and talk about the audit, the auditor called, or emailed me today, they want to begin the Fire Department audit on the 14th of February. It takes about a month, so that audit will be a deciding factor for the council being in April.
Let's see, I.
Is that all of the fire department?
It's not up there, Borough, to divide that 145. Their request was, we want $145,000 and then we're going to, we will divide it up.
$45,000 per station was their request.
Right, that's correct.
$135,000. And that's where the council's going to vote on that tonight for the $45,000 per station. Now, however the Fire Department use it, I mean, that's obviously with the leaders, the Fire Department, $45,000, but with the audit coming in February, being completed by March, you should know by April, with audit and with their status, what exactly is going to be happening and what their financial status is for the fire halls, all of the fire department.
Thank you.
Just considering the expense angle, do you know who owns the actual structure? Is it the social clubs?
The memberships.
The social club owns?
The overall memberships.
The membership.
Every dues paying member.
Every dues paying member owns the real estate, so it isn't separated, social club versus fire company?
Right, it's all one EIN.
Who owns the United building?
It'd be the United membership.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was given us by the church.
Part of it was given by the church and part of it was given by the Borough.
Yeah.
The new addition, the property where the new addition is in 1994, United was a consolidation in 1994 between the Fame and Henderson. Part of the building is this direction, was, that property was given to them by the Borough at that time to build the addition. It's my understanding of that, if something happened, it would go back to the Borough, and I don't know about the rest of the building.
Well, Brian, and wasn't it, it was my impression that we, I'd made some agreement that that would come back to the Borough some way somehow.
There was chatter, but we never, there was never any, I mean, we talked about it, but there was nothing ever on any paper, you know, because we weren't sure what was going to happen.
Right.
Yeah, there still has to be, my opinion, one yes vote down there that has to happen before any of this falls into place.
Okay.
You know, so would I be open to a discussion? Absolutely. You know, we can sit and have discussions, I'm for that. You know, whatever's going to be better, and we can make this work, that's fine by me.
Ryan?
Yeah, if I could just maybe help clear something up.
Can you get up there so we can?
Yeah. The number on the 135 there in the second page, that was discussed to be ARPA assistance to be split by three for the year of 2022.
Correct.
The discussion of taking it from three to two was from 22 one ounce allocations based upon the audit findings, to see where that would benefit, non-benefit, to go from there. So we actually have two separate, the ARPA was to assist the fire company for the loss of 2022. And what we're talking, like I said, the three to two was budgeting to 23 one ounce, you know what I mean? To try to help verify that.
Yeah, no, you're right, the budget, the audit is basically going to point a direction for the Borough when.
For the allocations.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to verify, we have ARPA assistance to split by three.
Correct, it is.
And then the allocation, potentially three to two, and make a better split versus a third, a third, a third. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can have, I can ask our auditor to do the research on that, to provide a recommendation on the finance split in the future after all that.
The ARPA is to really help pay tomorrow's gas bill, tomorrow's electric bill, not necessarily the allocation for the year.
But can you give us an update on where the city is in the separation?
Yeah, so right weeks before COVID hit, we had Matt and Kim Howser on a conference call. He was going to be the city's attorney to go ahead and move forward separating the club from the fireside, minimum fee of five grand. They had announced they were already at 20, we were looking at that too. So COVID hit, now we're passing the hat and selling extra hoagies, that project stopped until we can get our heads above water. So that's where that's at. The city, club, and the city fire is all one EIN. So to try to get the state in any time quickness is definitely a delay. The attorney fees, the lawyer fees. So to answer your question, that project stopped right when COVID hit, we got bills to pay versus lawyer fees. We were totally on board with the separation of the club and the fireside, but what do you do? The heat bill or the lawyer fees?
Were you guys further ahead in that process before COVID or what? Because.
The wheels were kind of in motion.
Yeah.
That, because on a consultancy report, when the consultant come in, his overall suggestion was the Brooklyn and United come together because one, the city downsized the fleet and kind of stayed in the building. The theory was the clubs would be in the background, sort of kind of helping. COVID proved out that people aren't going out, people are staying home, fundraisers have tanked, and that's where we're at. So the clubs, four years ago, that were sort of supporting, and the audits kind of kind of pinpoint that, are they still supporting? But when John set the auditor, or the consultant come in here, his suggestion was let's go to three to two. And I believe those wheels were pretty much already in motion prior to him saying three to two. But since then, city has sold the Ariel truck, updated the rescue, just like he had on that, on that report. So didn't stop spending thousands of dollars in attorney fees when COVID hit.
And then too, that United also downsized a piece too, they sold it to Ray Goss under the consultant's recommendation, so they've been falling hidden.
And just so I understand, chief, 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 United is still a viable active fire department, fire hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even though you're talking to merger and stuff, it's still a full-fledged active fire department, so you still need the $45,000 to, until all this goes through, until next year we get, okay.
And that $45,000 is going to help keep us alive until they get their answers, until we can, you know, come back into our separation.
United is also in the process of paying for a truck that has been replaced under recommendation of consultant also.
Well, that wasn't just under the recommendation of the consultant, it desperately needed to be replaced.
And that was still just another Band-Aid. The latter, you know, we replaced the 1994 Ladder Trump with a 2004 Ladder Trump, so it was just a Band-Aid.
Right, right.
Ultimately, that still needs to be replaced.
Yes, yes.
Nothing's being spent out there, it's not needed, believe me, some discussion that replaced years ago, but they got to the point they had to, now caught up with it at the same time, like Ryan said, COVID hit, fundraising's down, and definitely need help, there's no good thing in this town.
We're going to get you help, when we get there, we're going to get it voted on.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I really don't have much to report, but I did want to mention to you that all the residents are back in their apartment at Kish Apartments. There are several of the apartments that need carpet and that sort of thing, but the least of the residents are down there. What they've done is they've set aside a couple of the empty apartments, made them livable, so that when it comes time to go in to do the carpet and actually finish the apartment, they can move over to this vacant apartment. So then they're close to their belongings and it works out a lot better, and it's easier for the directors to keep track of the residents, so things are sort of getting back in shape there. There's just a few issues that have to be taken care of, but it's much, much better than it was last time we reported, so, glad for that. Other than that, anything else?
Voice chief?
Okay, our stats for January, 385 calls for service that the officers responded to, 24 traffic citations, 18 non-traffic, and 18 written warnings. We did our civil service testing on the 16th of January, the written portion and the physical fitness portion, and we'll do the oral portion of that testing next week, so, next month. We should have a finalized list of candidates for civil service for officer. We're looking into a countywide RMS system for all the local law enforcement agencies in the county. Right now, we're all using the same software, but we're all in separate systems, so we'd like to combine that into one system so that we can get data from the other departments, so, you know, officer safety thing, and, you know, I know we're all dealing with the same people, it's just right now we can't see if they're dealing with the person, you know, and we're dealing with the same person because they're separate systems. So we're going to combine that, there's a grant that we're applying for, for that, $250,000 grant, it's due in March, Lisa Stolnaker's working on that, and there's no, there are no matching funds for that, so hopefully we get that in the system. That's all I have for now.
Preparation board?
We did have a forum, we did have a meeting, so I can show you the draft meeting minutes. Basically, we talked about the ball field usage for this summer, issues with the geese, there's a lot of geese down there, so it's one of the issues I got to reach out and do some research on. Looking for some poll stats for the summer. Victory Park, we're still waiting for estimates to come back, I know Ben's guys are working on that, we'll probably have something here another month or two. Mural painting is on hold because the Penn dot bridge down there is a sense of issue, or a sense of pictures to the head guy of Clearfield, because it's fallen apart, but the mural blocks are coming out of the wall. And the issue, there's a support beam in the bridge directly above it, that's, which is, well, they're worried about it, so the engineers are not worried, but they're concerned they're going to have to look at it. So our, our project on the mural wall is on hold with Penn dot, does what they got to do. This is stuff we talked about, the CDV's park up on Catherine Wall, that we talked about that. Talked about some bicycles that are on, at the warehouse that we're possibly going to look at donating to some kids later on this summer. Positions that are open in the Borough, talked about possibly doing a breakfast with Santa or something on December 2022. We still have to talk to the Fire Department, Police Department, EMS, that kind of thing, to see if we want to do a joint thing where we reserve the community center down there and do a breakfast with Santa for the kids kind of thing. We got that date set aside for December 10th, we're not letting anybody use it until we have our meetings and discuss it. And we talked about the ARPA stuff, we just gave an update on what's going on with ARPA. That's to record meeting.
Yeah, the ordinance to consider for adoption tonight, this is the one that was actually approved or directed to advertise last year, and it has to do with essentially changing references from Lombardi Way to Lombardi Circle in the Streetsweeper ordinance and another location in your ordinances, it's been posted and advertised and ready for consideration today if anybody wants to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Basically, it was just an update of some of the streets and some things like that, the street schedule, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote?
Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to mention is we got a request for a liquor license transfer from outside the Borough into the Borough. The Borough has to have, give these people an answer within 45 days. What I would propose doing, if it was already the council is scheduling a public hearing, which is required under the liquor code, for five o'clock before the next council meeting.
So 1700 on nine March is the, be the public hearing.
Usually what we've done is ask the applicant to contribute for the, it has to be advertised twice, for the advertising and the court reporter fees, if you want me to request that of the applicant, I'll certainly do so.
Yes.
All right then, we'll, I'll get it scheduled.
Do we need to make a motion or anything for that?
I don't think so, because it's kind of just.
Is this still an existing business?
Yeah, yeah.
You're not voting for personnel or contractor money, you're voting just for a process? And not, not voting, you're discussing a process that we want to vote on it, and it doesn't have to be voted on to get on the agenda.
So, yeah, plan to be here at five o'clock then.
Who's liquor license manager?
It's, I think it's John Panizo and Panizo Management. What they're requesting is to bring a full liquor license from another, from Dairy Township, I believe, into the OIP, and then the OIP, they have, I think, like a beer only license.
And they want to put that in safekeeping.
That would go into safekeeping. So the practical difference would be that you would be able to order like liquor or wine there in addition to beer, I guess.
He briefed me on it today when I went down there, so he'll take his beer one, put it in safekeeping, bring the liquor one over, and then he can serve, you know, hard stuff.
Borough, Streetsweeper ordinance?
Yeah, that's it.
MCMA, Lord Vacancy, Lonny Griffith.
The only written request I've had to be placed on, the request on that facility is Lonny Griffith, I've not received anything from anybody else.
Did we advertise it anywhere, Kim?
We got the email on it, and I don't think we advertise it anywhere, no.
We didn't put it on our Facebook page or on the Borough website? I guess that's not our job to do, is it? I guess it isn't, since we're appointing it.
I mean.
We just technically recommend it to the county, they're the actual appointing authority.
Right, so what was your, what'd you say else, Senator?
I was just saying, it's all representative, so it would be, I guess it would be our place to.
To advertise that.
To advertise it.
Yeah.
To give any Borough, or Borough citizen.
Resident, right, yeah.
Do you want me to put it in the Sentinel?
I don't know, that's costly, but, Facebook, website.
I don't do Facebook.
We don't have, we don't have access.
We have the account, I won't mess with it, sorry. I won't mess with Facebook. I've seen what it does to people, you've lived it.
Guess that brings up the question, who's controlling our Facebook page?
Apparently no one is.
No.
It's probably not gone anywhere, I'm not on too much of it, so I can tell you.
She, I think she gave me the passwords and all that stuff, I've got zero on Facebook, I won't do it, I won't touch it, I won't mess with it.
Maybe Colby Guyer's taking care of it.
I don't know that answer, but yeah, I definitely think that.
We can put it on the website.
I think the website, I don't know what anybody else's thoughts is, but, and nothing against Lonny, and that he would be good for that, but I, you know, I think, should other people be aware of it and be given the opportunity to serve?
It's not like the zoning hearing board, where that's strictly a Borough entity, where here we're talking about.
Right.
They have to be a Borough resident, right?
Yes, you do have to be a Borough resident.
Well, I guess actually, we're a property owner, or a bit like a business owner.
Yeah. Is the Sentinel here tonight?
No.
No.
Ever?
No, just tonight.
Oh, okay.
I got to call, I got to call the editor after the meeting tonight, give him an update of what we discussed.
So maybe we could have that in our update, that, you know, we're looking for someone that either lives in the Borough or owns property to serve on the, and I guess they would just contact you, right Kim?
Right.
Okay.
I'm sure the, yeah, the MCMA has guidelines or requirements as to who can sit on that board, am I right, Mark?
They do.
Yeah. I don't know exactly what they are, but it's probably.
Very similar to what it was prior.
It's their board, they would.
The Authorities Act really says it would have to be, it'd have to be either a resident of the service area or a property owner of the service area. I don't know what any additional. I don't know what any additional requirements they might have on that.
And like I said, I received his, his request up here, so I have it. It's also on the council file. Sorry, did you guys want to read that?
It's on the protective.
Right, so protective, oh, yeah. Yes, ma'am, it is. All right, loan data, the loan payoff, Mifflin County Regional Police Department payoff. Okay, this one, the finance committee discussed. Bottom line is the payoff right now is one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty-five, thirty-one. Right now, we're paying over eight thousand dollars a year in interest on this loan. The finance committee recommended to the borough council that they just pay this loan off with general funds and be done with it and save eight thousand dollars a year in interest.
Makes sense to me.
Motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Next issue. Cell phone provider change to T-Mobile. The finance committee discussed this, and I got my notes here somewhere. It was roughly less than eight hundred dollars a month for service versus AT&T was over a thousand and Verizon was over two thousand. So by moving to T-Mobile service, we'll save over two thousand dollars a month. Now, we will get new cell phones with this because our cell phones are like iPhone fives or something like that. But the cost of those phones will be made up over that two thousand a month will be made up in a couple of months, and it will be free and clear, and then we'll be saving over two thousand dollars a month. So I would like to have a motion that we move over just to T-Mobile. Not a dollar figure because that can fluctuate, so you just want to move over to T-Mobile for our cell phone provider for the borough.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Another item that came up for the finance committee was the third tier refuse tag packet tier, whatever, whatever the word, a third tier, I guess. Right now, there's one, I believe, for forty, one's fifty, and then now they're looking at doing one for sixty. Let me find it in here because I got it in here somewhere.
Yeah, forty, fifty, and sixty.
There you go, right there. And this is what you get for the different tag, forty, fifty, sixty. So if you look over here, this is what you would get for the tags and stuff. So basically, for your cost and fee schedule, we would go to a third tier at sixty dollars per quarter, and it would be these tags. The committee requests or recommends the council approve it.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Can you make the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion.
You make the motion.
Oh, okay.
Second. You second it?
Let me give a little bit of clarification. Graphic there shows three ball, and, no, I'm sorry. It would always be the three ball.
Correct.
No matter what.
That's all you ever did.
Because we talked about adding, adding bulk stickers and stuff.
So for the sixty dollars, it'd be the thirty-nine tags and a three ball.
Just for big families. We got some big families in here.
And that will go in the cost and fee schedule, so once we go to that process, we'll vote on that, but this will be included in that.
It's been first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we just talked about the fire department audit. The auditor contacted me this afternoon, said they're ready to execute on fourteenth February. Takes about a month. The cost is about seventy-five hundred dollars. I think it'd be well worth, well, money, well worth spent to get an idea to help the fire department and what we can do financially for them and where they stand. I don't think we've ever done an audit on the fire department, so this is something I believe needs to be done.
I think we should do a fire department audit.
Just one, one question on that. I know you're involved in that kind of stuff. What, when you do an audit for a fire department, you guys are fantastic with the stuff you do. I don't understand what, what do we hope to fund or what do you gain by that? What does that gonna lead us to recognize or understand that we don't already know?
That's, that's, that's a good question, Lonny. It's what we don't know. That's why you do an audit.
Okay.
We don't, we talked about this, and I know the fire department guys in my office, not as a point and finger, but hey, where do we stand? Because they need help. So it's gonna help the council decide how much they can help and what they need to keep the fire department going. That's the purpose of the audit, find out what we can do to help them. Because right now, you really don't know. You know, you're gonna give them the forty-five thousand to help in a year, but what they really need to know in the long run for this.
I think they've never done audits.
No, you've never done an audit.
They get a structure, how they're doing audit, and every year, they'll be able to follow that and keep their departments on top of things, just like a business doing an inventory.
Like the borough does every year. It's a very good question.
Well, yeah, no, it just sounds like we have some good people that really have a good handle as to what you guys need to know and what your expenditures are. You guys do ninety-some fund ratings in a year. Sounds like you guys have a fantastic grip on what's going on. I don't know what paying seventy-five hundred dollars for an auditor, auditor would come in and say, aha, this is what we're really missing. That's where my, I'm just perplexed, is why throw that kind of money out there whenever we're, you know, that's where I'm at. If you guys say you need it, it's really gonna help you, and look, it's gonna, it's gonna benefit us, and we're just gonna produce a lot of savings, and we're gonna see a lot of, you know, it's gonna be a lot of light bulbs come up. I get it. I see you.
I think it would be fair for them to do an audit so them guys know where they're at, so they find out somebody's going to fund it with the money, so they'll find that out.
Or cost savings, like you're talking about, it could be anything.
The fire, the fire, they're in favor of doing it, the fire department.
Yeah, they have no problem.
They want to do it.
They want to do it.
Would that include the fire relief also?
Uh, if it's part of the fire department, we can ask them to approve that too. It should be probably part of it.
They can audit it here.
They can audit it in state.
Relief association, yeah, audit it by the state.
So we won't need to do that then, this is just internal. It'll give you a baseline. It'll give the borough council a baseline where we stand financially with the fire department. That's what it's there to do.
Okay.
It's been first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
The next part for the fire department, I've already showed you the ARPA chart. The finance committee recommends the council to improve forty-five thousand dollars per fire station out of twenty-twenty-two ARPA funds with a total of one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Already passed.
Parking fine increase. They talked about that also at the finance committee meeting for the cost and fee schedule. They would like to see the parking fine increase from five dollars to ten dollars.
Isn't that a little premature until we find out what we're gonna do with the parking meters?
Yes, but it'll go in the cost and fee schedule too. They're gonna have parking meters. You don't have to vote on it tonight, but they recommended it be done because of the cost and fee schedule. Because you're right, with the, with the new parking meters probably coming in, we don't know where they're going yet. Maybe it's just Main Street. I don't know, because it costs a lot of money. Other key piece on that being, and I know you're hitting the nail on the head, we don't have anybody to enforce it. And so that's one of the open positions right now that we're holding off on hiring until we figure out we are doing the parking meters, and that's in conjunction with the parking of forty-two. You're exactly right. If you want to hold off, we can. It's council decision.
Do you want to vote on it or hold on? Do I have a motion to pass it?
We can hear you. Which state, have you?
Can you make a contingent on when we get the new meters in?
Couldn't we do it when we get the new meters?
Yeah. Do you want to wait till we get the new meters, have you? We can do that. Let's just wait till we get the new meters.
All right.
Yeah, because we're, we're probably not gonna hire a, a meter maid until we, you know, something fixed up down there.
Roger that. All right, another item here for the cost and fee schedule, I have that on here as well. The sewer calculations. Be eighty-five, eighty-nine per quarter per user, and two hundred, or two dollars and seventeen cents per one thousand gallons of water. It's gone up slightly for twenty-twenty-two.
What was it before?
Uh, it was, hey, Ben, do you remember what it was?
Dawn.
Or dawn, I'm sorry. Do you remember what the, the? It was like, it's gone up like three blocks. I don't remember what it was.
So what you do is a sewer raid ordinance. I can advertise that for next month if that's what you think.
So what, what they?
Did we pay Frank Barry or anything to figure that out?
Negative. He feels sorry for me because I don't have a treasurer and people to do this, so he came to see me, so he did it for nothing.
Okay.
So do they vote on this, or you do it first and then they vote on it?
Do it.
Okay, got it, so I'll put it whole.
Okay, well, that's the next month.
Yep. All right. Deputy Borough Manager, Treasurer Contract, we'll talk about that in executive session. Deputy DPW, the wastewater treatment plant maintenance technician, the three working positions. Those are just the, you've already given permission to advertise for them. What we need is actual permission to hire them, so we can talk about it in executive session or, or not. But we'll go to the executive session, talk about personnel issues, then we'll come back out. Number fourteen is suspension of the street sweeper ordinance. Basically, it's the, those four streets below that should be suspended from, or accepted from the ordinance from twenty November to seventeen April twenty-twenty-two, which means they gotta move their vehicles at that time. Am I correct, Ben?
Correct.
We didn't advertise it. I, I think we did something like this. We talked about it. In November's meeting, we talked about it. Go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, I think what happened is at the end of the meeting, you simply made an announcement that the borough was suspending the street sweeper operation.
Correct.
It was never officially acted on by the council in and of itself. There was no motions made. It was never approved. Historically, these, the main drags through the town are exceptions to this in order for sewers and crews to get in there, especially around the businesses and things like that, having permits in town. I know Nelson had some rather candid conversations in the, in the finance committee meeting about this. You could see where the vehicles are not following the regulations. It's very apparent. By listing these streets as exceptions, it gives the police department authority to ticket them. Some question why Academy Hill was on there. It's really narrow. So at this point, we're just taking the garbage trucks to the top of the hill and actually legging the bags, you know, down to the truck. It also gives the residents that maybe service by oil or propane, they know that there won't be vehicles parked there, so they can have their deliveries placed earlier in the day. If you look at the ordinance, typically, the, the street maintenance is from eleven PM until seven AM. It's specifically written on, on Core Academy Hill from eleven PM until eleven AM. So if you do need an oil delivery, you do need the refuse and the recycling picked up, we're there before that time. So like I said, it also gives the chief and his group the ability to go up there. If they're on, you know, busy all that long, they can still get up there in the morning right first thing and, you know, hit those people, give them those tickets to get them out of the way. I think, again, it's one of those things you get them once or twice, and they're gonna learn their lesson on it.
So I think what you do is approve this and we'll post it on our website.
I thought this was in our ordinance.
No, it's just announced. It's just announced every year.
Yeah, it's just for the, for the borough wide, but not this piece here about, that's the, the streets are accepted for.
Have a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
The next thing that we have to discuss is the issue that Chastity brought forth before this meeting about the resolution for the CDGV monies. So we need to, a vote to add it to the agenda to discuss it.
I'll make the motion. We add it to the agenda for discussion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Okay, so for discussion, as you were, you heard earlier, there's a resolution, I can pull it up. Basically, it states, this is what happened with the money for the borough CDGV, and this is what's left after the borough funded this, different parts of the fair share projects. And we got the resolution. I just need approval of the resolution. Let me find it. Give the approval of the twenty-twenty development block grant CV resolution.
Make a motion, we approve that.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? pass?
It would have to be a roll call, though, Mark, for the resolution.
Then we'll get these signed and get these up to the county. That was everything I have for new and unfinished business until we go to executive session.
Any public comments?
Yes, that is the financial committee meeting that's not on the website.
The fourth, Thursday of every month.
So the next one is the twenty-fourth of February.
So, did you say the fourth Thursday?
Yeah.
Five o'clock.
Any other public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
There were about three notations I saw tonight with reference to vacant or deteriorated properties. And Kim, do you remember that number you put up there as far as a placeholder for vacant? I cannot...
Thirty thousand. I put thirty thousand up there.
Thirty thousand.
Only thirty thousand?
So it's ever been.
Okay. Well, you know, considering what's happening on the point, you know, that's three hundred thousand plus thirty. I'm concerned about how, well, I, I guess I want to ask, what is your vision for the point once the demolition is, is complete? Do you have an idea of what?
Yeah, it's gonna be an open space for right now until the council decides if they want to do anything with it. But it's not gonna be any structure around it at this, at this time. It's gonna be an open cleanup space.
And that's an extremely important gateway into, into the community. We need to look at it very purposefully, similar to what we did with the five points, you know, working with the community.
We don't need another five points.
Oh, okay. So then we gotta think about what we want in there. And it could just fall into a vacant lot that, you know, it's gonna be overgrown. It could, it could have parking. It could have a whole number of things. What I'm seeing in town, you know, we're at the cusp of a, just kind of a renaissance, a huge renaissance. And we need to have all of the incentives in place. And I know we're gonna be discussing LERTA in the very near future. And, you know, I'm gonna be going to bat for the borough to say that, you know, you guys are on board to look at incentives for not just commercial, but also residential. And having these things in place is extremely important. And we talked about INI issues. Whenever we do a facade rehab, when we leave that property, it's addressed as far as any infiltration or, you know, inflow issues. So, you know, by working on these, these things incrementally, it really makes a difference. And, you know, my twenty-two years here, I've never seen what is positive. And again, looking at the incentives that, that we could have, could put in place for developers, I'm talking to developers all the time. And, you know, that is a crucial point as people come into town, and we need to deliver it to them. You know, look at what's gonna happen there and not just let something happen. So I'm gonna be continuing, continuing to come to council and, you know, continue to talk with you.
When's the demolition start going on?
Um, I, Luke isn't here. I'm not sure. I think he was saying, and, no, I think he was saying April or April, May, it all depends on when the...
Yeah, he's correct.
Bids come back. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what the guy, the goal is right now.
Okay, you know. But we can't, we can't demolish our way out of this. We have deteriorated, plated properties. We, we talked, Carrie talks about the issues potentially in deteriorated properties. As a part of what we're doing with the demolition, we needed to look at a blight plan. And we at least had the semblance of one when we put it in. But I think we need to build upon that, you know. Deb, you've been looking at that. I, I think we have everything aligned, both with the, with the county, with what the borough is considering, and also townships, you know, to be able to address that very seriously. to be able to address that very seriously. So I'll, I'll be beating the drum, no doubt about it.
Hey, Jim, there's nothing wrong with that. You're right, you gotta put some thought into it. Right now, our goal's getting torn down and getting it cleaned up and leaving it alone till we decide what's gonna happen with it. Now, when I say leave it alone, I'm talking about grass, bench, something like that. You know, it's gonna be maintained, it's just not gonna be a vacant lot of gravel.
I, I was looking at it from a standpoint that, you know, let's not do a lot of improvement to it.
Correct.
So hopefully, we see the development take place, and we had some, you know, some ideas in place. And, you know, developing that corner is very, very crucial. All right, thank you.
We're gonna go into executive session now?